Here we go, all right, welcome everyone to this joint meeting on the new EL as we make our progress towards building our new school for this community. This is our third, actually our second of several joint meetings to further illuminate the issues that the community has brought forward to concerning our building of new EL. And we have solicited and gotten a good deal of response for that. And I guess I would have members of the city council committee, if they have something they would like to add at this point to the conversation, I'm going to pass around a summation of the questions that have come forward, have been put forward by you or and your constituents. I'm not sure if we've got quite enough, but we pass it each way, that I think can lead tonight's conversation because these items have been put forth and we've noted them, so that can begin the conversation around these. I'm going to set a reasonable time limit this evening to about quarter of seven because there is a playoff game at EL this evening, and I encourage everyone to come attend that as we support our local ladies in their quest for state championship, so we get that underway. If we get, were there any extras of these either side? Dan's going to need one.
Okay.
And if we look these over, I think we cover all the points that were brought up in our last meeting, and we have responses to those, and I think we will expand on those responses. We're hopeful and expect that Herrmanns will be here as they have a little more of the detailed information to address these, so they should be on their way. We encourage them to make it on time this time, but we didn't quite succeed in that encouragement, I guess, enough, but we'll work through that. There are some easy questions on here, things that we can respond to quite straightforward and get those off the table, but we'll take these in order. The first one being, are the taxpayers paying for two gyms and two turf fields? It's, to the point that we began this conversation, no one really knew what the state would pay for and what they would not. At this point, the state has granted us both gyms within our funding, so that we, the local taxpayer will not bear a burden for the second gym, which will get a tremendous amount of use, not only by our students, but also by the community and the after-hours programs that go on. So no, the two gyms are not a cost to the local taxpayer. The two turf fields would be. The state does not support turf fields at all, anywhere. They will put a grass field down, they will line it, and that'll be about it. They won't even wait for it to grow, but they will not put lights, they don't, they don't do anything. It's a, it's a grass field, and they say that you're able to play sports on that, and that's about it.
Tom, will he pay for two, two?
They will pay for-
Two grass fields?
Two grass fields, actually, there are going to be three essential grass fields there, a practice field-
Plus softball, baseball, yeah.
Yeah, baseball, and then baseball and things. But a lot of the amenities that we've come to assume and expect, supporting our sports programs, are not included in the state dollars. And we will get more information on that as we move forward. But to a large degree, and the public should know this, the state will pay, is paying approximately 80% of the cost of this entire project. That is yet to be determined what that real number is at this point in time. We may get a little more closer to that in the next couple of weeks when we have another meeting with the DOE. They are also struggling, I won't say struggling, but weighing their level of participation, what things they will include and will not include. It has put a significant burden on our superintendent and our architects to do some, some further investigation of what the state has done in other projects, what they have funded, because if we can find that they have funded something at a, another new school, say, within the last eight to 10 years, there's a good chance that we have a solid argument that they will include that funding in our own, which was the case with the second gym. So other things that we are, we are further investigating, some of the latest projects, one being Sanford, where were they and what did they fund that may have been beyond what the normal formula accounted for. So are there any further questions on the, on the fields, the two gyms and the two fields? Questions, one, have we-
And did you notice in the comments, what you're seeing when we see the words enlarged gym, you know how you've been seeing enlarged gym, that's at 700 square feet to make it the same size as our current gym. So whenever you see enlarged gym, it doesn't mean a second gym, it means in the large gym, in the plans, there's 700 square feet added. So whenever you look at the plan, you see kind of X's, that's the local contribution section of the gym.
I don't know if we-
So it's in my notes?
Yeah, it's in the note there. We were, we were going to try and get a graphic that would show that difference, so we have any graphics that way yet?
Yeah, that was, we can pull it up, that was submitted on the pre-information that we sent out prior to the last meeting, the floor plans that had that.
Yeah, on the floor plans, wherever you see there's some-
X's.
X's and stuff, that's the local contribution.
Hard to see that in terms of-
It is.
Online and the pictures and things, so I was trying to see if we couldn't color, color it in some way that would, yes, Bob?
I guess later on, I was hoping that we'd go through the local pages that were presented last time, but if we're talking specifically the fields right now, I do have a question on the, the second turf field, and I guess this is, as we talk later, this is off the local page, we're talking 700,000, but does that include the artificial turf, or is that the cost of the basic field?
No, that's the artificial turf.
Right.
Okay, so what's the differential then between just the turf, regular turf field versus artificial turf?
The 700.
They're, they're, they're both the same exact thing, one would be in the stadium and one would be on the multipurpose.
I understand that.
All right. You mean grass versus turf?
Correct.
Okay, that's the differential between, that's adding the turf onto the grass field.
Right, but I'm talking the second turf field.
Yeah.
That would be the 700,000, Bob. The state will provide the grass field already, that's part of the funding.
Okay, so that's the 700,000.
We want to turn that into a turf field, it's 700,000.
Can I ask you a question about this additional space?
Yes, Holly.
I don't think Bob's going, hold on, we'll go to Holly after. So Bob, I know, it is confusing. The, in the main package, which he's bringing up the notes, in the main package, the building committee discussed that the stadium turf field would be in the big vote. A second turf field would be an additional vote. So we did not put in two turf fields in the main package, we put one, which would be in the stadium. The second one would be in the multipurpose field-
Correct.
Only if the public chooses to add that 700,000.
But there's also a question whether that second field would be regular grass-
Correct.
Or artificial turf. And I guess I'm asking the question, what is the difference for that second field between just grass versus artificial?
700,000 that you're seeing.
The state will give us two fields, right?
It will give us all the fields you see on there.
All the fields we have in the design.
All the fields we want, they're just plain old grass fields, we have to go and buy grass-
Correct.
And plant it.
Yes.
If we want turf on the stadium, we pay for the stadium turf, and if we want turf on the-
Second.
Second field, we pay $700,000 to put turf on that, correct?
That's the incremental.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Holly?
When you mentioned the extra 700 square feet for the gym, the current gym, when you're measuring that, does that include the stage?
No, that does not, it's just the playing area.
Okay, so it's just the playing surface, so the extra 700 square feet would be to mimic the actual playing surface, okay.
Why do we want the extra 700 square feet?
That's the size of the current.
Scott, do you want to talk about that? That was part of his committee.
Yeah, that was, that really came from the subcommittee of the group really wanting to maintain the same size that we had and the same seating capacity that we currently hold right now. That was one of their wishes of, they understood that the state funded a certain percentage, and as, if we go back into the history, that this gym came on after the building was created, which allowed for them to create the size that they desired at that time in the community. The subcommittee and the feedback from the community forums was very much, we want the same-sized gym in order to maintain what we're doing in addition to operating from our phys ed programming needs, like it was, it was, that was a big deal, that they wanted to maintain that size and have that opportunity, have the options that they are available to them.
And that was the athletic subcommittee that was a big deal too?
Correct, and that was gathering feedback from the subcommittee, which was made up of community members as well as through the community forums. Like they, they like that size, it's, it is a little larger than what they've seen when they've traveled around and checked out other gyms, and they really felt like they, they wanted to go that path, like that, that made sense to them, and that the 700 square foot wasn't a big variable for them.
Thank you.
So it's this area here, so you see that yellow line in here, that's-
Trying to get the little mouse, but-
That's the 700.
Yep.
See all this, that's local, that's local, okay, so those are, that's what we tried to show you by the colors.
Bob, so talking about that gym, does that, the cost include the bleachers?
Yes.
Yes, well, remember the bleachers, they pay for the, state pays for the bleachers for the 1,100, and this is the additional.
Yeah, that was another very large point, was that they wanted to be able to maintain the same level of seating, which is a little bit larger than our student enrollment right now, and would be again, like that, that was a big deal for the community members when we went through the forum and brought in the subcommittee, like they wanted the size and they wanted the seating capacity, and hopefully we get to see that seating capacity full tonight.
So, so the, this, it's the 700 square feet, but not the bleachers, so it just makes it longer.
Hey Fred, yes, Dan, what's, what's the difference in maintenance costs, grass versus turf per year, do you know?
Good question.
So-
And can we do it in-house, I guess is?
Yeah, the, in the short term, gra, the artificial turf doesn't require the mowing and the irrigation to, and fertilizing that natural turf does, but over a period of time, you have to replace the oil. The only, the only regular maintenance thing you need to do is actually, the crumb infill has to be either replaced or redistributed, so.
How often is that?
That one, you, you should be redoing the crumb redistribution, but I think they even have machines that kind of could do it, but, but once every year or two, depending on your usage of the field, so.
Does that machine cost factored into the local option?
I, I think the, the idea is that you'd hire a company to come in and do that, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have the equipment yourself.
So that's something that'll be, you know, itemized on your operational increases on an annual basis?
Yeah, we can look at that, yep.
The turf field, one of the reasons it's usable is it can be plowed, so that's, again, an additional activity for maintenance.
Yeah, it's a good point, Holly.
Any further comments, questions, concerns? Clarifications needed?
I think generally, I don't know if this is the right place, but, but still the idea of the school department thinking about having a real memorandum of understanding with the community about use of space, and if that's part of the consideration that will be presented to the community at some point, is kind of a more, a more formal discussion.
One of, one of the items on the list addresses that, so we'll get to that. I'm not going to take all the items here, because some of them are, one, not as well prepared for at this point in time, just because we don't have all the information, and I'd like to have a good response to all of these questions as we develop that, but the economic impact is, the economic impact of a new high school measurable. I don't know that we have a lot of background yet established to provide a good answer for that, we're still working on that. Certainly in my estimation, in the brief research I've done, it does have a positive economic impact, but we want to quantify that to some degree with the experience within the state. So we're looking to get information from Westbrook and some of the newer high schools and see what impact has happened, whether there's been increase in population, increase in business, that type of thing. So we, we're not going to deal with that second point right now, but we will be dealing with it, we're not saying we're going to pass over it. We will get more information so that our response will be a little more informative. The third question on that first page, will we see a difference in test scores? I would like to say yes, you know, that's always the case, we'd like to say. There is some research, and we may comment, a reference to a couple of studies that indicate that that's a possibility and, and something that may happen because of a improved learning environment. Can we guarantee that? Absolutely not, I don't think that's, that's one of those really soft issues. Someone would like to have further additional comments?
Well, I guess the, the area that I would hone in on is those opportunities about expanding relevance and engagement with students, and what we know from research is doing those things enhances their achievement by them becoming more engaged in relevant opportunities that they have in the classroom, and having those flexible opportunities, flexible spaces, to have that opportunity to collaborate really pushes those 21st century skills that people talk about, and I know sometimes people get fearful of that, like that really takes the, the foundational knowledge and moves it into the application area, and anytime you can do that with students, you're really deepening their rigor, and rigor goes hand in hand with increased achievement, and what, if you're only looking at SAT scores or you're only looking at graduation rates, then you have to hone in a little farther on each one of those, but time and time again, what we know is that relevance and engagement really supports students' growth and achievement along the way, and the opportunity with a building to supply that programming need and having those flexible spaces and those additional opportunities that currently don't happen now, would support that recognition of growing student achievement and student progress.
Mr. Chair?
Andy?
Real quick, one of, this happened to be one of my questions, and, and I guess what I was trying to do is compare it to the, what the state will do as opposed to what we're asking the local taxpayer to pay, because I understand it 100% that a new school is going to make a world of difference, but I guess if we're going to ask the taxpayers for a dollar or two, $1.50 in their tax rate on the mill rate, we gotta, I'm hoping we can justify that what we're doing has real relevance, that it's not just pretty, but it actually has some evidence to show us, because, I mean, that's our job after all, is the best education for our students, and that's why we're here. And a pretty building is great, but can we have some stuff, like for instance, we're talking about the community stairs, we're talking about the dining facilities, we're talking a lot of extras, that really hard to quantify what it's going to do, and our first, I mean, our goal is a good education for our students and better results. When real estate brokers bring people in, they don't say, oh yeah, so you're a pretty building, you got to move in. No, they say, how is the schools? They don't ask how good the building is. So we need to make sure we have programs that are going to advance that effort, that's all I was asking, and whether, you know, 10 million or 22, 22 million is going to make the difference, I'd just like to have some evidence or comments on that.
Well, and that, my response to that would very much be, the opportunity to have the CTE satellite program brings those programs that we don't currently have, that is the enhancement, that is the programming that we're certainly desiring to help bring that relevance and engagement for the students, and so that's not there now, but in this model, that, that is what-
It is, but that's not extra money, that's not part of the 23 million, that's the state's coming in and funding most of that CTE program, correct? With the exception of some salaries.
Yeah, you're asking as if having a, a performing arts makes a difference.
Well, no, having, the whole package, when you take that, $23 million that the local share is going to pay for, where the difference comes there. I know what the state's paying for, what it can do, but I want us to be able to at least, that's what we're actually here to debate, is, is a, an auditorium going to help the student body?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If it's not, then is it going to help the community? If it is, show us where, and hopefully we'll get to that. But that was, the meaning of this thing was the additional money, what does that mean?
And I talked to Peter about it, because I'm not, I, I did not major in economic development, but Michael Channing, Chammings did, and he's your-
That part of it, but the school part, I mean, the children's education part, you are an expert at, so that's what we're hoping to get.
Well, you asked about economic development.
Well, no, this question, this question here talks about grade, you know, graduation rate rates and-
So I can get some articles about how the arts play an impact, I'm sure Bill Buzza is, he's here as well, and he can speak to the, the power of the arts, and having more students involved in the arts raises student achievement. We can speak about co-curricular and kids doing better when they're involved in co-curricular activities, so we definitely, so more, I put down here, need more information, so I'll do more information.
More information on the difference that we're asking the local share to pay, what that difference is going to make to the educational quality for our students, that's all.
I think-
And I will get articles sent to you, definitely.
Bring along with that, Andy, one of the things that I'm trying to work on with the architects is to make it a little more graphic in, in the sense of, here's what the state's package is, and then here's what we are hoping to have, and have that little more, sort of comparative difference, so that, that the public and, as well as members here in this committee can, can look at and digest it and say, here, here is the difference. I mean, we can, we can visually see it a little more, very, you know, on the plan that was up there, you really can't see the, the hash marks and things that say, gee, this is what you would have if you went with the state package as opposed to what we're hoping for with the local bonding.
So one of, one of the things is, that they've run into, and I haven't been in the meeting, so I can't speak specifically, is this per-student allocation of space, and so right now, they're working to try to bring that number closer to what the state's looking at, but right now, it's, it's beyond that, correct? So that would be an example of how that's going to enhance, so this was built on the programming that we feel is the best for our students-
Yeah.
And that has been lacking for our students because of the lack of space and flexibility of space. So that is something that can, you know, we can get that in.
And that line can be easily justified, I'm hoping that maybe we'll get the state to help pay for some of that, that additional square footage, and we always build a, a building and it's not big enough, and so that will make sure we take care of that, so see, that can be quantified, but so much of that other stuff-
Yeah, and there's an article, the first article that I cite here, Mark and Lisa shared, is the case for space and effective learning spaces on teaching and learning. So that's an excellent article for you to read, it talks about the space and how it impacted student learning, so that's an article that we shared with you.
Part of our, part of our request in the local funding is to enlarge classroom size, it's just-
Right.
You know, physical space for, for teaching and learning. Bonnie?
I think it's important to remember that kids go to school for different reasons. They have to go to school, first of all.
Unfortunately, we're all set up, absolutely.
Right, but some of them stay for different reasons, some are athletes, some play in the band, some are drama, and if we didn't have those activities for these kids, then probably our graduation, graduation rate would be higher on it, higher, yes, on it. So sports, athletics, drama, the arts-
Yeah.
Help keep the kids in school on it, they help foster good relationships with each other in their, in the community.
Absolutely, and I think that a lot, what's in there is, is fine, in the arts, if we didn't do a 1,200-seat auditorium, but we did a 600-seat auditorium, I think the arts with the staging and, and the other theatrical stuff that I see in here would be good for them, and we wouldn't have to go with such a huge building to, to get that done. I guess what I'm saying, that's the comparisons I'm hoping for.
Yeah, we're getting to that.
And if I could, I just, you know, I just want to say, just with the courtesy of time, this conversation could very easily go into selling the pros of each aspect of what's been planned, and then it could devolve, you know, dive deeper into, you know, point counter point, I don't necessarily think that will be productive tonight. We do need all these questions answered, and the councils have some, and have some good questions too, but I get, I just want to kind of caution with time that not going and why this is needed or why this isn't, because there's a lot of hypotheticals out there. I think that can come, but I'm personally, and from what I'm hearing from constituents, we want to, I want to see why and where the money's coming from, okay? Where is this money coming from? How much are we actually talking about right now on the surface based upon the work that's been done to date? And if we can maybe have that, that can probably put all of our other questions into context.
There's one thing that I haven't seen, and I'm looking at that space right now that you're showing us, is there a, an educator, is there a teacher who would say, this is how, this, this is what the space means to me in terms of effective teaching? Maybe it's stories from people who are in the school, you know, we hear about how the spaces are great, and there's lots of research, and, but our teachers, you know, and I know you've heard a lot from them, I would love to hear a teacher say, having that space outside my classroom is going to allow me to do this and improve my teaching because of this.
I think perhaps-
So I'm writing, I'm writing down your ideas.
Yeah, that's piggybacking on sort of what Andy is, is saying, I think, is this idea of-
Part of the educational spec was the interviewing of teachers at EL that became part of the document that was submitted to the state and also helped guide the architects and- and the design. So there was a good deal of, of teacher feedback and staff feedback regarding that space and how it would be used and things, so that it isn't visible here as you're requesting and perhaps we can do that. But it was a, an integral part of the design. They have had their say and their input.
Oh, I appreciate that. It'd just be nice for us to maybe hear some of that and it could be offline.
Yeah.
Kate?
Yes.
Any further? I know Andy's had an interest in the increase in the operating expense per year. And, and Jason's bringing up the point of how do we, how do we pay for this, where the costs are going to be and how are we going to fund it? And I think we're kind of discussing the, the expenses and what we're asking the community to support. And then I, I'm, I'm piggybacking on Jason's comments in that I want us to identify those and, and have those out on the table. And then I think the, the discussion of how do we fund that? How, how is this city going to address those needs? But I think we need to, I would like to see those concerns, those questions and our desires be put on the table, have that discussion that we're having so that the concerns that the community have and have voiced are, are out there. And then we turn around and say, all right, I mean, if we feel as a community that the 1,200-seat auditorium is appropriate and the two turf fields, whatever we just come to for determination, and we look at that impact state on the, on the tax rate, we look at, how do we fund that? And what is, because there are ways of funding it, as Jason has pointed out many times, we need to get creative, we need to think outside the box, we need to take a look at how do we address the concerns that's going to be the best for this community and make it affordable, make it digestible. And, and that's our task. I think we have a couple more weeks of getting together this way. And right now, I want to surface the issues, I want to surface where, where we are and to get those up so that the community can talk about them. And then we look at the, the hard numbers about, how do we, how do we afford it? And if we can't find a way to afford it that we feel the community will support, then that's when you say, you know, we're not going to be able to support this. And we, we look at some other alternative. But at this point in time, what we have heard on the building committee and through the public forums is this is what the community wants. That's what we have heard. Certainly the feedback that's come that way has supported what you're seeing as design. So we want to take that forward until the community says no, or we come to the decision that we just can't find a way that the, the community is going to be able to support this. So it's, it's a community decision, nothing we're going to do here. It's going to get to refer and the community's going to make that choice. But it is our obligation to surface everything, get it out in the open, get it so it's being discussed, so that we're looking at things as a total picture, that we have the, the big picture on this. Bob?
You know, I wonder, is this project phaseable? You know, I think right up front, we're talking a structure and that we need to address because that's, we need that for the, our students. But some of the other, particularly the fields, will come later. We're not going to be able to put the fields in at the same time we're building the, the structure. And the parking, you know, the, the stadium, the, and all the fields. So could we, in a sense, look at some phasing, because I think the most important thing for our students right now is the structure. We've got to get that going. But we have a little more time looking at how we fund maybe the bleachers for the stadium, the press box, the, and I think making a decision, final decision, whether we go grass or, you know, artificial turf and so forth. And maybe those are the items that we could really look for support elsewhere other than the upfront bonding of the structure that we need for, for our students. So I just throw that out as a question. And I guess I'll look towards our architect to kind of give us an idea of maybe what is the phasing? How much time are we going to have that we need to know to start construction of the building? And then how much time are we going to have then to look at exactly what are the needs for the, for the fields?
I'm going to just point something out, I think first, Bob, to that question. The, the state is providing X amount of dollars for, and take a field or take an auditorium or whatever we're taking for the, the extra things we're looking for. And the design will have to include what we'd like to have. So you're, you're talking phasing of the actual construction.
No. We know that the, the most important thing right now is the structure for our students. The, some of the add-ons, the fields, parking are all going to come later because we've got to build the structure before we can even take down the old high school. So I think there is a, a gap in time and a lot of the extras that we're talking about, you know, we need to determine the square footage that we need. And I think the most important part of that is the auditorium. But when it comes to the athletic fields, some of those decisions, the extra costs can be deferred and may be bonded separately, or we might be able to find donors for naming rights or whatever. So I think, you know, is, we're talking about how we're going to, you know, price or, you know, pay for this, and I think there's a little more time on those extras, on the outside of the structure.
Outside extras. Andy? David, do mine?
Go ahead, Dave.
I know you sort of dance around the question about what it's going to cost us for our light bill and our gas bill and whatever, but shouldn't we be able to project that based on the architect's?
We do. And we've got, we've some numbers.
And is it going to be tremendously more? Is there going to be some cost savings and lights and gas and that sort of thing? You have the figures already?
We've got, we've got a handout if we want to jump to that at this point.
One thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Andy.
I would, wanted to see if we could get an idea and I've been starting to follow Sanford and their project. I've gone back three years, their fiscal budgets to see what's going on and I really want to watch and see what happens with fiscal 20 because that will really be the telling tale of what it's going to cost them to operate their new school, I think. But I have noticed that there, fiscal 19, there was quite an increase in education spending, but there was also an offsetting revenue from the state. So I'm not sure, when they advertised it originally, I read the story from 2014, they were claiming they were going to build a high school without any additional local share in taxes. Now, one of the reasons was is because they had 12 portable classrooms that they could eliminate. Now, I know that's not a, what is that, 20,000 a year to rent a portable classroom? I'm not sure what they charge. So that's not a huge bunch, but that was stuff that they found to help offset the cost of, of running the new high school. Now, the proof will be in their FY 20 budget, because I'll be looking at that very carefully to see how it compares to FY 19, but they found a way to try and keep the local share at least reasonable, and that was a $100 million building. Now, we're talking about 120 million with our extras, so it is a little bit bigger project, but there are things that we can learn from that is what I'm saying. And from other schools have been built too.
They had a huge donor, huge donor. They built in the quarry of the donor. They had a huge donor, Genest concrete. And they gave a lot of money, a lot of time and a lot of space.
Material.
A lot of material to Sanford too.
But they still had a $10 million bond that they had to pay.
Right, right, right.
And still not, and the operating costs were still there.
And then they had $2 million on top of it that they raised locally.
Which is another thing we should probably talk about too, is what's going on with fundraising, but as an option.
As a gift, but just remember, they had a huge donor when, right from the get-go on it.
Yeah. But I'm still, the operation cost, and we got this passed around because that's my biggest concern, is putting, you know, a dollar to the tax rate for bonding and then put another dollar to the tax rate for increased cost to run the school.
So what you have in front of you is a preliminary, just take them, estimates, I guess is the best you could do. The current costs of the current ELL are right on as an average and factored up, if I understand correctly, for that year, 5% increase over current?
There are different, different inflation rates there and under the assumptions, so different for electricity than for water.
Right. So they've been increased for that fiscal year 23, 24, what you see before you. This is trying to account for hours of operation, temperature settings, you know, all the variables out there to give you some idea of what it's going to be. We've got square footage of 168,000 in the current ELL. We're looking at a new facility with 240,000 square feet. That's a 43% increase in size and square footage. So we've got a sizable new facility. If you look at what the estimates are right now for the 23, 24 year, the cost per square foot is, currently is 309. And with cost savings and things that we hope there would be in place with appropriate materials and geothermal, et cetera, our operating cost would be about 386 per square foot. So that's a 25% increase over our current cost per square foot. Certainly the, the total increase goes up. We're assuming the full building climate control, which is one of the items on the public local share that we would like to see. We assume the geothermal will provide the, the base heating and cooling. We're not expecting a swimming pool, which would drive that way over that. The electrical and fossil fuel costs addressing heating, cooling and electrical, the plug loads in the lights, an 8% or 0.8% annual inflation on the electrical rates, 5% annual inflation in the water sewer. And we're basing that on 1,180 students, 400 CTE, 100 staff and- and some operation during the summer.
So if you could verify quick math based upon this, these data points, that reflects a $405,000 annual increase to your operational cost, no labor, just hard costs?
That includes labor.
That includes labor.
That includes labor? As in, as in custodial labor?
Yes.
Okay.
All the costs, the whole thing is factored in.
Supplies as well.
Supplies, labor, fuel, water, the whole-
Right, forbearance, non-teaching, non-curricular positions?
Correct.
Just custodial maintenance? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that, is that involving the same number of custodians that you have right now?
No. That's in your, in your, one of your questions that you ask is on here. So it pays for, you, you can talk about it if you want.
It's currently, how many custodians?
It's on page, the second page.
So we currently have seven FTE custodial and we're anticipating adding another five and, and additional one maintenance, just based on our preliminary conversations. And these numbers include only four plus the one maintenance because we believe one of them would fall under CTE, which is funded by the state, as well as covering the performing art space, which we would hope would be covered through the revenue brought in by that. So these estimates are four additional custodians and one additional maintenance. Now, you currently rent out space for different activities or? We don't rent out space. We charge the actual costs that we have to incur for custodial labor, if there is any. So anything we bill out is just to break even. Well, that was, that would be an offset for, for costs. In the new facility, absolutely, yes.
I've got a question, will you get a chance? How much does it cost for ground keepings and field maintenance right now for labor and your water? Because you're talking about the cost of what your water and sewer is with all these new ball fields and things. And I have nothing against them, but your water costs and your sewer stuff may go up because of all the water you may need to, to water the lawns and take care of the plants and to do everything else. Have you figured that into your overall budget on what it's going to cost to run the building and the outside grounds?
Right now, we, we haven't looked at the differential, so that's information we can gather.
I think you've listed the things in the other utility, non-utilities right above that that aren't covered.
I mean, one of the challenge obviously is, I'm sure we'll be expected because of city use and so forth of maintaining our Sherwood Heights field, maintaining our Walton field. So we don't, when you don't have much, you're going to come up. So yes, we right now take care of one field at Edward Little High School and a backfield. So yes, there'll be more, but that's why you have the additional maintenance person and so forth. And we do our crews, our current maintenance crew does all of the Sherwood Heights, does the Walton Field, takes care of those spaces. So, you know, we're not taking any fields offline for these fields.
But you're shifting to municipal responsibility.
No, I'm, I'm saying in order for, I'm saying we're going to have to work together.
I'm talking about Sherwood and Walton.
Well, I'm saying Sherwood and Walton would be more available, more, a lot more availability to the city, then we have to talk about that.
Right, no, I just, I thought I heard that when you're talking about maintenance costs, you're taking, because you're taking Sherwood and Walton offline.
We're not taking them off.
I'm sorry, shifting that to municipal responsibility.
No.
That you could cost shift that to your new fields at Edward Little.
Well, in theory, you would think you close fields to open new fields, but the city needs fields, we all need fields, so I anticipate we'll still be maintaining those fields.
On the school side?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why you're not seeing, you know, the differential where you would take offline and put online, those type of things. So I think that's to support the community's needs for fields.
Now, would these people, which brings up another question, these people that you're hiring, are they skilled with groundskeeping and stuff?
Yes.
And are you currently using groundskeepers now?
Our maintenance, our maintenance crew does our landscaping. Our maintenance crew and our custodians handle outside. And then in the summer, we hire part-time mowers.
And they have their own equipment or do you have equipment that they use?
It's our equipment.
And now who maintains that equipment that you have and where is that stored?
We have it maintained, Reggie's, I want to say it's Reggie's, but it might not be. Is Billy here?
He is. How much do we maintain it on our own and how much do we have to outsource that for our outside maintenance equipment? Yes, how much of it can we maintain and repair in-house and how much do we have to outsource?
We maintain and repair almost all.
Almost, almost all, but in-house.
Yeah. And you store it, Billy?
There will be some adjustment to whatever those, whether you have a turf field or a grass field. Grass takes a bigger beating and therefore perhaps more maintenance and less playable time. But the turf field is not maintenance-free. You do water it, so I, I don't know the difference in terms of, depends on the summer sun. Dry August means it's hard to keep a grass field.
Does it grow?
Yeah, no, turf doesn't grow, but it gets dirty, so you do water it.
Tom, I have one other question too.
Yes, go ahead, Andy.
Um, this, while we're on the subject of, of operational costs, I wanted to bring up too, maybe we can have these questions answered at a later date, but one of them had to do with the geothermal. I've talked to some people, I have a good friend of mine, he's an engineer in this business for a major company for a long time, and he's telling me that depending on what you're comparing geothermal to will depend if it pays off for itself. But there's technology out there today that's almost as efficient as geothermal would be without having to go into geothermal. And the technology is just create, every day is changing, he says. And at one time, you could compare a boiler, a, a gas run or an oil-fired boiler, then you'd have a huge payout with geothermal. But because of the efficiencies of systems now, geothermal is not necessarily the best thing. It may be, but I hope we look at other options. Because it also leads to my other question with the AC. I'm all in favor of AC for this building, but $2 million for infrastructure to do AC. There are, there's heat pump technology out there that does both. And so are we talking about having two systems, one for heating and then a whole new system for AC? Or are there systems that'll do both? And I know I have a heat pump and I can't believe it only cost me $15 a month to air condition my place because it's so efficient. It's a heater, but it's more efficient as a, as an air conditioner.
Primarily a dehumidifier.
So I'm hoping we're looking at other options with that.
Sanford, dehumidification versus air conditioning. And that's what a heat pump, it's not an air conditioner.
Right.
It's a dehumidifier, correct me if I'm wrong, on the, on the HVAC terminology. It pulls out the heat or the moisture.
If I say three and a half million dollars of heating, air conditioning, infrastructure, that I hope it's been vetted completely and it can look at other options because that money could be better utilized for the things that we can put our quantify as- could be better utilized for the things that we can put our quantify as values to the student. And I really hope we look at that.
I'm adding it to the list.
Andy, we did have a sustainability committee, and we talked for months about whether we do geothermal, whether we do gas, do we do fuel cells, do we do, it went on and on and on. And we came to the conclusion that the best thing for us to do would be to do natural gas at this time, and to do the geothermal, which would help us cool the building in the summertime or when it's hot. Am I right?
Yeah, and I'll let.
Lisa was doing.
In on most of that conversation, but yes.
Yes, that was correct. We looked at several systems and several couplings of systems, reviewed them very thoroughly with the group, and looked at the costs and the payback of those.
So you're saying this technology doesn't exist that my friend knows about that is almost as efficient as geothermal?
I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just saying we looked at several different scenarios with our group, so we can dig those back up and share that information. But we looked at different scenarios, and we can continue to look at that, but that was the system that we arrived at with the committee.
Okay, and the two million dollars for just AC alone, I mean, is that just, you know, chillers, a bunch of them on the roof or wherever they are? And, you know, how do we come up with two million dollars just for air conditioning infrastructure? If it's not part of the heating system, it must be separate from the heating system.
We'll have to look back at the numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head as to what's in that number alone. We can look at what is the equipment and everything that is coupled into that two million dollars.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the heating and cooling, the idea which we heard from the committee was to climate control the entire building. And the most efficient way, we did look at solar, and that would not.
No, I'm not talking about solar.
Yeah, I know, that wasn't going to pay out. We looked at a variety of these, and we had two engineers, electrical engineers and others, one that worked for the state as well. So we did have some expertise in our committee. We arrived at the geothermal as being the best payoff in terms of return on the investment. And when it turned out that the state was seriously considering, I don't think they've actually checked it off yet, have they? They did, okay, paying half the geothermal.
Yeah, and the original number was like two-point-three million.
Right.
Now, we're paying one point, almost one-point-five, which is half of three million, so did the geothermal go up?
Right, so the geo, no, the geothermal is the.
In the original presentation, geothermal was like two-point-three million or something.
Maybe in construction versus project, I think.
Oh, yeah, you've got to be looking at construction versus project, total project. That's.
Geothermal, I said, it was one-point-five, no, actually, one-point-five with a high of one-point-nine for geothermal on the original presentation. And now we're paying one-point-four, which is supposed to be half of, what I assume is three million.
I think that that paper there is.
This is what was presented, yeah, this went to the public.
Right. But I think it included at that time that we assumed that the state would be paying half.
Did we on this? I don't think so. Not when we did the original presentations.
Yeah, it was over three.
Not on the original.
So the high was like two million for geothermal, when we first presented it.
Like, we said, the facts right now are what they are. What that was, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Well, this is what the public, the public form, both of them we had.
No, I hear you. Just to debate it is, this is the number.
This is the number, okay.
Correct.
And it's half of what the cost is, so three million dollars is what geothermal costs.
Correct. But we can, we have it on our list to look at some of the other things that you brought up.
And if we look at the current payback of that, it takes about three years, three-and-a-half years to, for the savings that we would realize if we.
Based on the one-point-four.
Yes, based on one-point-four.
Yeah, and I think it is compared to a gas-fired boiler, if you're gone with that kind of a system.
Right.
It definitely saves.
Totally air conditioning the whole, the whole building. The payback is very, is very quick. And then it's the savings every year thereafter for the life of the building. So there, that was vetted fairly well in our committee in terms of where we wanted to go and what we hope.
I'm sure it was. I just wanted, like I say, make sure we're looking at all options, and like when that three dollars and eighty-six cents per square foot, that includes heat, which I guess without the geothermal, that would be higher.
That's correct.
So the number would be four dollars a square foot as opposed to two dollars and eighty, three-eighty-six if we didn't use geothermal, right?
We can, we can run those numbers.
We're trying to get that number, and I had asked for it, it wasn't available tonight.
Cool, thank you.
Know what it would be. That's correct. Any further questions on the operating cost at this point? Expanded programs, in the next question, there's a lot of expanded programs. I won't say there were a lot beyond the CTE. And there are only two new positions, I don't know if, Scott, do you want to address those?
Yeah, the two new positions would be definitely the computer science and the substance abuse counselor. It would be hard pressed for anyone to say that having a substance abuse counselor on staff would be a hard one to not want to support, but that's my opinion. Computer science, we have a fantastic science teacher who is teaching many, many computer science courses, coding, robotics. It's kind of, it's evolved from his physics courses into that. By the growth of those courses and the limitations of that space, those things have worked hand in hand, and it's increased the class sizes of some of the courses that he used to cover because of that growth that he's done. He has partnered with Carnegie Mellon Institution University, and we are, we are on our next phase of students. We're getting ready to start their AP computer science. He's built a curriculum in conjunction with Carnegie Mellon. But really, that is a coup for us to be able to be offering this. The state doesn't have a computer science certification program, so you've got to kind of luck yourself into having a computer science guru to be able to teach it, and we do. He's reaching it on grants all over the place. He's partnered with many community organizations to do work with the students to come back to that relevance piece again. But what that has done is that he is limited by the space that he has to be able to fully operate the computer science programming, and by him picking, adding those classes, the demand for the courses that he's had has come offline. And so that's, that's why that additional position needs to be able to be supported.
Andy?
Thank you, Tom. Again, this is one of my questions, and thank you for that. I guess what I was looking for mostly is three years from now, when we open a new high school, are there plans for additional programs and staff?
These are.
Well, they're starting next year, so they were starting those immediately.
We need to get them in the budget. We've got to give them in the budget for the state to allow us to put them in the new school, to have the space allocation.
So that's it, though? There's no other, this is all planning for until now and then the school opens?
This is it.
The state's pretty sharp on, they're going to fund what you have, not what you want to have, as far as spaces, like, hey, that may be great that you want that program, but show us where that's happening now, because they're very particular about that. So having these spaces shaped and arranged the way they are allow us as a building to be able to be creative and evolve more programs in and take some out. Like, currently, I have social studies teachers who are taking courses offline and adding courses in. That's not space-specific, but the way this development has happened with the architects allows for teachers to be able to do that and adjust to the student needs of, we know long, you know, we have a low enrollment in this course, and we're getting a higher demand in this course to be able to do that. But I would come back to the state, they, you could come up and say you want five computer science courses, and they would say, that's a fantastic idea, but you don't have that now, and we're not funding that now.
And we're not going, and we don't plan to with the new school. I mean, I'm not talking about.
If you want to do that, that's on you, the local contributor.
That's all I'm worried about, because the state subsidy is one thing, but what's going to be on the local share is really what I'm looking at. Okay.
The only position not noted here is if you go with a twelve-hundred-seat auditorium, we will need probably a director. When I talked to the former superintendent Sanford today, what they did is they funded the position at a certain salary, and part of the person's job is to find enough, is to book the auditorium to bring in revenue to offset his salary costs. So that's what we would be doing too, is generating a projection of what we, you know, based on what other, like Westbrook bringing as much revenue as they do in for their thousand seat, and us predicting for the twelve-hundred seat, how much would we be able to pay with our revenue coming in for that position? So that may just be an offset of, here's, it would go in the general fund, but then it would have revenue matching its salary. That's more discussion on where we land.
If we have, if we open up that discussion a little bit too, I was doing some research, and the information you provided on Westbrook was great, it doesn't make a profit. I mean, because we all know how P&Ls work, and I'm sure there's certain things in that P&L, I mean, after, its modified net was only about twenty-three thousand dollars annually after three years of operation in Westbrook.
That was after they paid their expenditures, and they have a fund balance of a hundred thousand.
It's a little disingenuous to say, you know, it's twenty-three thousand, or that's profit, because I'm sure there's, utilities are not metered separately in the auditorium, maintenance isn't categorized separately and so forth. I mean, there's, you have to look at it. But bottom line is, I don't think you should hire someone.
That's what the business.
I think the city should. I think the city already has a software. Now, this is a proposal, this is how, you know, we utilize existing city staff and maybe augment where needed versus a whole new position on the school side. The city is experienced in bringing events to the city. They have a specialty already in place. It would be a true community asset at that point, I think we could address that, if the city could control that, work that, and even help with the P&L and the operating costs with regards to, you know, cutting out that per, that per square foot cost and attributing that to the, you know, budget that the municipality could hold. I throw it out there because if we're going to start looking at chewing away dollars, because right now, after adding up everything with operations and extra positions, one-point-eight million dollars in annual bond payment, and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong at all here, please, one-point-eight million dollars in annual bond payment is, we have to add to that. Operating costs, extra utility costs, salaries, we're looking at two-point-three-six million dollars roughly, annual addition to the budget. That includes bond payment and increased operating costs. So I think that's where we're standing at right now. That scares me, because then we're looking at not ninety-two cents addition to the mill. My rough math, again, correct me, please, I'm looking at a buck twenty-seven per one-hundred thousand.
The other thing to add to that too is you have the two positions, computer science, substance abuse counselor, and you have additional custodians.
That's all in. He's already added that in.
I did. I verified it with Tom.
That's almost half a million, yeah.
I just, can I, because I want to go back to, because people watch this, your comment of in, that I'm not being upfront or whatever, I just want, what I shared for facts came from the Westbrook business.
No, you shared the right ones.
Right, I just want to be clear on that.
I'm looking at it from a straight, no, it's not that, I'm not, no, listen, this is just about math. It's about business.
Right.
And businesses, I know very well, and I used to pride myself on doing it, can hide numbers anywhere to make anything look good, you know? So when I look at something like this, I look at it at face value, and then I'm like, okay, there's a significant leeway here. Cumberland barely passed a new auditorium for their high school, just recently, eighteen million dollars. I don't think there's any state funding involved in that too, and they're under no misconceptions. They know that will never cover debt service, let alone operating costs.
Oh, no, I, yes. And be clear, it wasn't to cover debt service or anything, it was to cover the position and its maintenance. That's, I'm just saying.
Right, but this is something that we need to look at?
Right, but it isn't to pay for the bond.
Okay, no, but I mean, this is just something that we need to look at when we're looking at the total impact of the taxpayer. You know, how do we minimize any increase? How do we stop any increase, frankly, and then how do we minimize what we already have on the table? Utilization of assets in other areas, i.e. the municipality or the nonprofit area? Are tactics to be used in order to lower this, this general mill obligation? Adam, I don't know if you verified my number.
I'm in the ballpark, yeah.
I'm in the ballpark?
Ballpark.
I failed algebra two like three years in a row too, that's not bad.
We go back and give you the credit.
You know what? I've been trying to get credit for that for a long time. I won't say what my GPA was. So, okay, that's, so that's where we stand. Tom, we'll turn it over, I'm sorry about that.
It's a good point, yes, Bob.
Since we're talking about the auditorium, could we go to a page in the handout that came to us our last meeting? And I think, again, it's actually back to the session earlier, things that could be defrayed from the bonding to get the structure. If we look, and the pages aren't numbered, but I'm looking at the add-ons for auditorium, and I guess from an architect's and building perspective, first, I guess for the seats, there's a line seating above three-sixty-seven. Now, there's a two-thousand cost per unit, so what's the unit?
Seat. It's per seat.
Per seat?
Right.
Okay, per seat.
And that's the construction, and multiply it by a one-point-two-five to get the actual project cost, so the actual burden is about two-thousand-five-hundred per seat.
Okay. Then going down, are there some items that could be put in after the fact of the auditorium's in? How hard is it to put in the lighting and sound as a future project? Same as the rigging, the catwalk. And I guess, looking down at the tech shop, dressing rooms, storage, and concessions, if the space is there, are we talking, when you're talking tech shop, is that filling it with the equipment that's needed to support productions and so forth?
Oh.
Or is it just the space?
Yeah, so the costs associated with these is, and to your point of, can you phase some of those?
Use your phone, use your mic.
Oh, is this working? Can you hear me all right now?
Yeah.
Very good, sorry about that. It gets a little complicated in that the equipment requires a great deal of infrastructure too. It's not simply just the soundboard, but it's all of the dimming racks and the sound equipment and the pathways, and so, so it's not as simple as saying we could add that whole thing later. A lot of it, we have to get the infrastructure in place now for, and the equipment is only a fractional component of that. So that's one aspect of that. The, the things that you could plug in are the ones that, later, are the things that don't require that initial investment in, in this. So the rigging, for instance, you've got to build that now, that's part of the infrastructure. The tech shop is going to be part of the school, and, and things like the sawdust collection have to be built into it now. And same thing with concessions, it's really the space and.
Okay, I guess that's what I'm trying to separate out, you know, we want the space, that's part of the structure. But, you know, if we're going to have a dialogue as to, you know, school function versus, you know, if we're going to have a director not part of the school, you know, for upfront bonding, if we're trying to get the number down to have it pass on a first referendum, and that's my objective, I don't want to have to go back to a second referendum. If we're going to make some cuts, do what we feel that we have to do now, but let's get the school built. If we have to go to a second referendum, we're just postponing construction. So, you know, I think that's why I keep going back to, and I think this is a case where we want the building, we want the space, and if, you know, if it comes down to needing more money to fill that, you know, actually outfit the space, I think that is a separate consideration.
So are you saying to, not to necessarily bond the twenty-three million? Don't have a heart attack, Andy.
I'm already having a heart attack.
So not necessarily to bond the twenty-three million all at once, but to say, all right, the year after the school's up, the stadium will be, needs to be bonded, or the auditorium needs to have X, Y, Z in it? Is that what you're saying? And then do another bond?
Well, and hopefully, it wouldn't necessarily be all bonding. I think that gives us time to look for outside sources that might come forth, again, a big donor, naming rights on certain aspects of fitting out. But I just put that on the table, and that's why, you know, that's why I'm very interested in going down through all these local pages, because I think we need to know what absolutely needs to be bonded upfront. And, you know, again, it gets back to the structure. If we're going to talk to the auditorium, we want that space, and we put all the seats in upfront. Might it be, we, again, we want to be sure that we have the, the structure, that we can go to the full twelve-hundred possibly, or whatever the number may be, but do we have to fully outfit it right upfront?
Well, I think it goes to what you've been saying, Mary Levesque, I'm surprised you didn't grab the mic on that one.
I actually enjoy this, and I'd like to be a fly on the wall at the Hayes house tonight.
Yeah. Just so people.
Every night. Every night.
I don't know if I can handle that.
So the bond, the referendum question decides what's going in the building, right? And it has to have a cost towards it. The bond doesn't get sold for two years. So yes, we have two years to say, well, the original question said we were bonding have two years to say, well, the original question said we were bonding at 22 million.
14 million, I mean, that sounds better.
So-
If we didn't say that, Andy.
But, so, in two years, if we do, um, you know, put, really put our robust fundraising campaign together and looking at some of the different things we've talked about, we might not have to bond that.
That's right, but the problem is, the question to the public-
Exactly, yeah.
Is gonna be the, the full number.
Right, yeah, and that's our PR work that we're working on around-
And I think that's, as we talked earlier, around the table-
Correct.
Uh, that, that's what's gonna maybe kill the first pass.
Right.
So I-
I, I, yes.
Would, the state, would they even fund, like you say you did phases, I don't believe, they're not gonna fund something that's not finished.
No, they won't, they will not.
So that, that, the phase, you can't just leave an auditorium empty, and they're not gonna help fund that, I don't believe.
Correct, no.
It's like a construction loan.
Absolutely.
You gotta finish your house.
Correct. The state board is not going to approve a project they don't think is going to be funded.
So they're not gonna approve that, an auditorium with nothing in it?
Correct.
And I don't think that's what he said, was that it had nothing in it. I think that he said we'd put the seats in it, right, Faith? You put the seats in what you absolutely need to put in it that's not, not tied down.
But my theory is, we'll never finish it. Why don't we just do it? If we're gonna do it, we do it, or we don't do it.
I agree, yeah, and Dan's kind of, Dan's right. We're talking value engineering here, we should be talking about costing, you know, versus about, value engineering comes last.
I think we need to figure out, okay, we need 10 million dollars, we spend 10 million, but don't build something we're never gonna finish.
Right, I agree with that, but I have a question for the mayor. I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire on the thought that if we get a thousand or 800 or 1,200-seat auditorium, that the city will pick up on their budget side the person that's going to be in charge of it.
Well, I can't make that decision, thankfully, but I will answer you, Bonnie. It is better and more practical and passes all conventional wisdom to have the people who are already connecting with people who are looking for space and bringing things to the city-
Absolutely.
To focus on that, and also conventional wisdom states that it's important for people to focus on curriculum and teaching if that's their job. And so, with that said-
So you're on record for that too?
Good, I've been on record for that when I ran for this job. Um, but, what I will say is, it makes sense. Now, is this an idea that would help save money? Maybe not, a position's a position, but maybe there is 10 hours a week that we can dedicate to this at the city versus a FTE on the school side, maybe it's augmented with some other labor, okay, that are doing other things. It's about load-bearing, load-bearing.
Absolutely.
And it's an idea, and it might not be a good one, but it's an idea that needs to be debated, absolutely.
Those are the ideas that absolutely do wanna get debated, but I think my premise at the beginning of this was, we wanna decide what it is this community wants.
Well.
And we're, we're building on that. Then my point is, what is that gonna cost, and then how do we afford that? Because if we, if we start that way, then we're not nitpicking this, that, and then not, and we haven't built it yet, we're not even looking at what we're trying to build. We have a design, we have a desire that the community has said this is what we want. I wanna take that, I wanna vet it, I want people to understand what it is the community has said, what we have put into the design, what's there, what it's gonna cost us to have that. So that the community understands, we have taken that feedback, this is what we, we believe the community wants. Then we, as the leaders, think, can we afford that, and how do we go about affording it? And Jason's ideas of sharing this, or where's the maintenance gonna be taken care of, or how do we reduce that?
Those are great ideas.
Where does geothermal play in this, to get that cost down? Uh, those are the discussions that we have. Once we, as a body, have agreed that this is what this community needs, this is what we want this community to have, then the decision is, can we afford what we want?
Let me answer that question, if I could, on behalf of the council with four minutes left. Of course, any council could say this. I think that, I will, I agree about 99% of what you just said, Tom, absolutely. I think we have to respect the wishes of, inspect the processes happened already with the building committee, and look at how do we fully fund? How do we, how do we pay for the $1.27 without, without looking at, you know, whether or not we agree with the concept, 'cause frankly, our, our job as a city council right now is to look and have a fiduciary responsibility, of course, but we also know, we all know we need a high school, and we all want this to obviously pass on the first go, as Council Hayes said. Um, I would just like to see us starting at this point of a $1.27 per, you know, $1,000 in valuation, that's what the tax bill's gonna be with operations and the $22 million build, and let's start getting this down. Now, the question, and it's a variable, what can the people afford? Well, you asked all 23,400 residents of Auburn, and they're gonna give you 23,400 different answers, okay? Um, there's a, it's a big calculation, and I don't think it would end well to kinda debate, you know, 50 cents on the mill versus 75 versus a $1.27. I think we all agree that $1.27, though, is too high, right? I mean, if we can get that kinda general understanding, and if we can get a general understanding saying, let's start looking at every possible way over the next couple of weeks, to start getting that down to the point where we've exhausted everything, then look at that number.
Right.
And then decide that number, is it too much or not? And if we did that, and then we can go to value engineering, phases, 1,200 to 800, second turf, what have you, we'll go there.
Andy?
Just one last thing I want to say about that too, because I've heard good stuff tonight, but one thing that I keep hearing is promoting and selling to the public, or promoting to the public to get their approval, to get their support, but we wouldn't be good officials if we talked them into a $1.27. Hey, this is all we're gonna do, and then that first tax bill comes after it's built and it's a $1.27. Now, we've, we haven't done the right thing, even though, they may not know that. I mean, they're not doing what we're doing, that's a lot of people paying attention to what we're doing, and the whole process is up to us to look at that and say, what is really feasible to the taxpayer? Unfortunately, they're not gonna, they're gonna know that decision.
You're a salesperson, aren't you, Andy?
Yeah.
You do sales?
I was retired.
Maybe retired, but he was, he was in sales, right?
That's right.
And you believed in your product, didn't you?
Well, but I also know the sales technique was to sell-
Did you believe in your product?
The, the sales technique was to sell the product first, and then once they're sold, now tell them how much it is.
My question is, did you believe in the product you were selling?
Yes, once we get down to a point, we believe it, we have to have a product we believe in.
You believe in the product you're selling. We believe in this, I want you as a council to believe in this project, and then we do sell it. And I wanna, I'll use the term, we need to sell this to the public, because it's what we, as a body, believe this community needs, what our students need, and what we should be supportive of.
But we can't do the, the price. We can't throw that price out there, we, we can't just hand that to them.
Well, we may, we may not be able to sell it at that price, and I agree with that.
We can't.
And so, we look at that, and how do we price it?
Right, now how do we find ways to-
And from sales, you know, you always dicker.
That's right.
So my point is, yes, but we need, as a body, to come together behind, this is what the community has told us they want, this is what we feel we should support, how do we afford it? How do we, as a body, now afford it? Go ahead, Bob.
I'd just like to turn around. First priority is the student, and second is the other community wants. So, yes, it's a community high school, but the, the high school is there for the students, so that's first priority. So, whatever we fund, you know, is gonna be first orientated to the student. You know, some of the things we're talking about, uh, you know, yes, we'd all like to, you know, have the extras for full community participation, but upfront, we've gotta take care of the student first.
I like that.
Yep.
And I think if we think under those terms of what does a student really need, that's going to help us make the decision as to what we decide on with the rest of the list, because-
The, the city has to come first. In my job, you all can have your own desires, but I'm, you know, and, and your own methodologies, and that's fair. We'll never come to agreement on whose should come first. It's, as a mayor, I'll tell you right now, the city of Auburn comes first in a very holistic look. City includes students, it's a very integral part, it includes our seniors, it includes our businesses, it has to be weighed and balanced through everything. Um, so, that's where, if, and I was in sales for a little bit, and I remember, the easiest thing to sell is something that sells itself.
That's right.
Okay, and the best thing that sells itself is through a process, that they're gonna get the best high school for the best value, and they elected everybody here to work for them to get the best value. That's our job, and we can't, we have to ask, keep going down this hard work, or doing this work to get this number down, because we're not, we haven't seen, and we can't, we're not there yet.
Right.
We need to keep working that down, so it's about the entire city.
As the state said, we're not funding the community, we're funding the school. The school is the state's priority, the DOE's priority.
They did that.
Yeah, and they're doing that. All right.
And with all the extras that they have.